9:02, so if we're good, let's get this started. Please add what religion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First and foremost on the docket, we will open the meeting, the public budget hearing for the public. And is there any discussion, is there any concern from the public that are here concerning the budgets that we'll be going over during the next couple of minutes? Anything else? Oh, just public. Hearing done, I will take a motion to adjourn the public budget hearing.
Second.
Move. Ethan Brown. Any discussion? We have a motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And we will open our regularly scheduled council meeting. Begin with the consent agenda. Yet I think you all have the agenda in front of you. If everyone consents with the agenda as presented, my air motion.
So move. Second.
Move by Paul Ryder, second, and Ethan Brown. We have a motion in the second, any discussion? Council members? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six to zero. We have minutes, Beth, I presume? I guess we'll, I'll wait for the, I'll wait for those for a minute.
Just nine.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's fine. Looks like we've got approval of August 20th and August 19th, and then we've got the workshop. Regularly, we're having two, they're gonna workshop. Review of financial reports, I think last month.
Hey, Mr. President, you would go ahead and get a vote on all those, if you can all at once?
Oh, okay.
He already did.
Oh, it was under consent, okay. Good call.
Okay, as we move on to the review of financial reports, I know last month with the presentation of the budget, we didn't have any financial reports, we didn't have anything to report at this, at this point. I reviewed some of the reports and present percentages. Looks like everyone is in a very decent shape, you know, somewhere between the high 50s to maybe 63%, 64%. Pretty much what we should be this kind of year. One thing I did see is I was going down through, and this is just pretty much a sidebar, the CARE County Council, and I understand why it reads this way, spending the money from that that we have given to and for signage tourism, for administration operations, and publicity, showed them all three at 100%. Well, that just means that it's 100% of that's come out of general fund to them. Obviously, I think one of the conversations we had this summer during edit conversations was that a vast majority now was for promotion of the bacon fest, which never took place. So maybe keep that in the back of your mind, you know, going forward versus.
Okay, they explained to commissioners that they had another use for. It was, they did not do the bacon fest, but they also, they did other activities with it, they kind of.
They are running a grant to use up the rest of their funds. And they opened that grant program up to local businesses. And as we speak, it was able to last week, the funds of all that they had were used.
Okay. So they were, they were utilized in other, other ways?
Correct, and it was just, it was mostly for the advertising amount for the bacon fest. It wasn't, it wasn't, um, to put on, to put on the bacon fest, but it was mostly their advertising and signage.
Okay.
But that's what they used that for.
And the reason they got them out is because they have a contract with the county. So that's the only reason I'm like for the.
The chambers or the contract?
Mm-hmm, they presented a contract, which is what the EUC does. And then at the Delphi Chamber, they have to show receipts that they spend it before they get reimbursed.
So the Delphi Chamber money is just supposed to stay in the.
In the edit process.
Hasn't there been discussion about how some of the other towns and the presentation?
Yes, and they did, and Brompton did.
Brompton, okay.
So they did somehow decide on the edit funding because it was passed on to them. We, we tried to do it last year and it was, we didn't get it passed.
So that was a discussion.
Well, they have to come present, so, yes. And then Julia is, that's part of Julia's thing too, is that she's helping the other towns with their festivals.
Very good. And anything else concerning the review of financial reports?
Okay.
Move on to the auditor's report, that's that.
The one thing I have is to get signatures on the additional probation resolution that for the August additionals, we improved it a bit in some, some of that. And then I sent out the reports to you guys, I believe, last week or earlier. Are there any questions for me?
I know that we have, this is, I know that we have one in our budget here for next year, new laptop server bug. Is there a way to possibly get new ones, a little bit of in so I?
That's up to you guys, that's not a.
This, this laptop, how does that work since they could be?
I mean, I mean, his battery is dead, Randy said it would be more to fix it than to get a new one. So that's what, we are trying to get some through the CARES Act for next year. But that's up to you guys.
How does that work when we've got eighty years for ourselves? Do you pay that ourselves or how, when you give them, or is it this year that I have a front issue?
I mean, it would, it would be an additional transfer.
Yeah, just like everybody else. But you gotta, I mean, I can't say yes.
But that's, that's for the.
Exactly. Well, I mean, I mean, so.
So you guys.
Let's make a motion for him to do it.
I, I certainly, I mean, if we're to have, you know, inform council members and be at the information and the equipment to do so.
What was the costing on it and do we have it in the budget right now to get all of them and just put it through this year?
I believe it was like $1,200 for what I put in the budget that I got from Randy. But with the CARES Act, I think since we were getting so many extras, then it was lower. I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, if we're gonna get some to the CARES Act and then some not, we could probably put them through right now and just, I mean, not the ones for the CARES Act, but won't the CARES Act reimburse it? Or is that not how this is gonna work? What I'm saying is get all of the laptops at once and then the ones that are reimbursed by the CARES Act would be reimbursed.
Well, so we, so the CARES Act Committee had a meeting yesterday where we reviewed some, some needs associated with COVID. New computers was a part of that because it enhances telework, remote work opportunities if the courthouse would be shut down, if there's a quarantine situation again within departments. So Randy Cleaver, who handles our, our IT and computer equipment for us, quoted, "For the commissioners and the council, at a thousand dollars apiece, ten computers totaling $10,000." If you don't get that discount according to, because we would order it bulk, according to this estimate that Randy gave, they would be 1,300 apiece. So there's a bit of a markup there. So to just order one, I realize it's 300 bucks, it's, it's not that big of a deal, but. It, it, you know, it's a bit more of a cost when we intend to get, you know, all council members and all commissioners.
And I'm not sure when that's going, I mean, we have to get it passed by the commissioners. We also have to get it passed by the attorney from the CARES Act. I mean, so there's, it'll be by the end of the year, it has to be.
It has to be.
The other thing too is you can get on your own computer at home and get all the information. Maybe you can't, that's not being personal, but it's just getting your, what I'm saying, your emails.
Well, then it's my question then, if I mean, if you're going to wait and just get them all at once through there and save the $300. So if you're looking at three months, so it's not very long. And you're gonna have to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you ever have his personal email versus?
So there's.
No, not his personal email, he would have to set that up. Like I have mine set up on my phone just like when I'm on vacation to chat. But you can go on to Microsoft, I don't know, but.
I just made a call to.
Cecily or I can help you set that up today.
This is web, this is a web-based email. So you can access it from any, any internet connection, any computer that you can get on Microsoft, and it's the Office 360 suite. All right, thank you. Yeah, it's a bit of a loop to jump here, right? I know it's frustrating, but if, if we can wait till the end of the year, we find that every time, it's probably.
Can I just put a call in to Randy, he called and he wanted to.
Oh, okay.
Because I had a problem setting my left.
Sure.
Oh, we, we offered.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can do things.
Yep, all the right in there. Thank you.
Okay. Does that make sense? Next, we've got Declaration of Just Line for our, your own public library. Is there a document or is anyone? This is just recognizing.
Correct, just recognizing. That we are financial, we, you are the financial body for that. We've done Camden and we did that part.
Can I make a motion to, to the document?
Do we need a motion?
Please.
Yes. Second. Okay, we have a motion by Paul Ryder, second, by Jason Martin. Any further discussion from the council? Those who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion carries six to zero. Okay, and we'll move on to transfers. Is there any, I mean, there's quite, quite a few. Are there any that anyone wishes to separate, collect separately and discuss?
If he's not included in the discussion.
Oh, okay.
I think we have just three of the additions.
Oh, we have a second, Edro.
No, the transfer to the additional.
Okay, moving down to additionals. We've got Sheriff K-9 donation fund, K-9 operating supplies of $5,000. Hope you want to address that, please?
I guess I look at this as a transfer, Beth and I have had this conversation, it's not, the money's there. Okay, that's the bottom line, we have that available through our, our fund. Last count I had, we were somewhere in $7,000 actually in the fund. So this is a matter of moving from one location to another, but it's deserved, it's here, so.
It's moving it from a stash line into the budget.
Right, so like I said, this is, I'm not asking for additional money, it's just for point A, point B.
Is it necessary or?
Yes.
Because we actually, in essence, pay claims through the, the operating line.
I'm moving to approve this transfer. Second. Additional. He said.
Thank you.
Okay, then here's the resolution that that was approved.
Can I hear a vote on that?
Yeah, we've, we have a motion by Paul Ryder, the second, ladies and Brown. Any further discussion by the council? Oh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion carries six to zero. Yeah, on this declaration, should I go and have Josh sign this?
Seven, seven to you.
And next item, we have an additional to be advertised. This is out of pre-trial, additional compensation.
Oh, sorry, that's me. Yes. Good morning, can I pull this down, is that okay? Sure, okay, it's a little easier to talk. I'm asking for an additional line item in the pre-trial diversion fund to add compensation, additional compensation for my staff. That's basically it. We, in the past, we'd done it under a different line item, we were told that that was the wrong, 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 wrong line item, sorry, the wrong title for the line item. And so now we have to add the additional compensations. That, I think you told us that that's what it had to be under, is that right?
Right.
Okay.
Well, you, at first you wanted to do it out of the 3,000 line, which is other services. You have to have a contract for that, there's no contracts with employees. So then they put it in as part-time and I, they can't do it under part-time either because the employees are not part-time people, so.
Right.
What you put down here, when you signed it, I just moved it up there.
Sure, sure.
So they can know what's going on.
And actually, this works better, this is how White County does it. We checked with White County how they have it in their pre-trial diversion, they have it under additional compensation as well. Again, it's not, the pre-trial diversion fund, you guys remember, it's not something, it's budgeted by the county, but it's not funded by the county, does that make sense? I think that's probably the easiest way to explain it. So obviously, if there's no money coming in for pre-trial diversion, there's no money we can spend going out. And pre-trial diversion again is used for first-time offenders, other cases like that. It's used in all kinds of cases, it's diversion for criminal cases, deferral for traffic charges. So that's what I'm asking for, $10,000 there for additional compensation to supplement the employee's income and it's deserved, they've done a good job, those kinds of things, so that's what I'm asking for.
Okay, so it's not based upon an hour of the rating or anything, this is just at your discretion?
Right.
Type writer of check for.
Right, right, right. We do it every year through the 4D office as well, through the 4D insane. Marie gets a bonus twice a year through that as well. We've checked with other counties, every county we check does it this way. And so, and Rob Life did it this way before I was here, and I can't tell you, Chris Thompson did it this way. I know, I don't, I don't have any contact with her.
And what are the bonuses for?
Just additional compensation, I think they've done a good job, I think they deserve it. I give them the bonus.
And the diversion, if I'm not mistaken, is fairly wide open when it comes to what you rate to do with it.
It is, yeah.
Supplement radios or something, or the sheriff's.
We, we do all that stuff. We, if the ra, if the sheriff's office needs supplement for, I think we might have done vest one year, we did, we haven't done rating. Well, maybe we did do radios. I bought a taser for the reserve Camden Deputy one year. Anything that they need supplement for, obviously, we supplement Steve's, whatever he needs through that. It's a wide range of things, any office improvements that, you know, we don't have enough money in the budget, we bought new computers with it. When Rob left, he was using his personal computers, we had to buy a new computer, we updated the staff's computers. We did a lot of that through the diversion fund because it's a self-sustaining fund. And as long as we have the money there, if we don't have the money there, then we can't do it. So we try to, that's one of the ways we try to keep our budget down as much as possible is use that. I don't want to replace that with the budget because it's not guaranteed. If we don't have money coming in through the public from the diverted fund, then we can't, you know, we don't have any money available to allow. And so that's the problem, it's not a definite, it's not a definite set of money that's there.
About approximately, you know, off the top of your head, about how much is it worth?
In diversion? You know, okay.
And that's, I was going to make a comment, and it's not because of bonuses or anything.
Sure.
But his budget right now is at 39,000, left him, for him to spend out his $60,000 budget. He has $23,000 in his current fund balance. And I know you continually get money in, but that's not how budget is done, it's done by the, what is you have at the beginning of the year. So I'm not sure that the C board, the DLGF, has to approve this for pre-trial. I don't think they've ever done an, I can't remember doing an additional pre-trial, it'd be a humeral fund that I don't know whether they have to approve or not, but if they look at this, they might not approve because they don't take what you take in during the year. So I, as auditor, I'm gonna ask the, can you transfer this one?
Sure, and do we need to add?
Even though, I mean, they can approve that, but knowing that you don't have funds to do your whole budget.
And I guess we need to talk about adding that as a line item to next year's, because I didn't do it when we did the budget meeting. So I'll have to go through those steps and try to get that added.
Give that input to me and what you can give to them during the budget time.
Okay.
That would be my, that was my question, can we transfer it right now and then the budget for next year?
That would be the hope. I don't know, but that would be the hope.
I think Jackie said, if you remember, Jackie said that this wasn't a fundable account and finally disagreed. They finally disagreed. So I would think we could go ahead and advertise this and then talk with Jackie to see what you really should be doing.
Do you have a question?
I mean, that's just an auditor's safeguard, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Advertise it.
Even if you transferred, you're transferring it, knowing that will take you down to 13,000.
But 13,000 to be able to spend out a diversion line item for the rest of the year. And that I can do, because if there's something we've, I guess, I don't see any expenses coming up in the next three months. We've got the computers taken care of, that's a big thing, we've got, we're in the process of applying for a COVID grant to supplement some other electronic stuff to help us remotely do court and whatnot. We're kind of, we're limited on how we can remotely do court, we can do it by telephone, we can usually see it jail by video, but it's spotty. So we're, we're working on this COVID grant, I'm working with the courts to try to get this COVID grant filed by January, kind of supplement that. So the point is, I don't see any unforeseeable technological expenses coming up. We're only gonna have one more trial this year, so I don't see any additional expenses for experts of those things coming up. So I could stay within 13,000 for sure. I don't know.
What, is this 10,000 a hard number?
No, no, I mean, we don't need that for, no.
You don't need that much, right?
We, I overplayed those numbers because, so I can stay within the boundaries, so, yeah.
Advertising that and figure out what you really need and/or if we can do a transfer. But that's actually because.
Do you make the motion?
So you can say it. So do I need to do anything else then, or do I just?
Tell me what you really need.
Okay.
Or come back and tell them what they, you really need.
Do I need to be on, I can probably tell you today, or do I need to be back on the agenda next time after you advertise it?
Well, it's gonna be advertised between, so then we don't need to know exactly what you need.
Okay.
And then if you think we can do a transfer, then we'll just put it on the agenda as a transfer.
Okay.
What are the chances of receiving more funds for the next three months?
Oh, absolutely, I guarantee that'll happen, because part of this fund comes from traffic tickets. You get a speeding ticket on the Harlem, or something like that, we'll offer you the deferral. For traffic tickets, called the deferral, for misdemeanors and felonies, it's called the deferral. So I guarantee, we're not gonna go the next three months and not have any funds come in here. I expect to have more and more because we're ramping up since we're kind of on, well, we're kind of getting back to normal with COVID. We're having more and more arrests, more and more tickets, all those kinds of things. But probably doesn't matter because of only, that's the problem. Last year, we budgeted for only 60,000, so that's all I can spend on this account this year. That's why I inflated.
If you have the money in your fund.
If I have the money in my fund, right? If I don't have, if I don't collect $60,000 a year, I can't spend it.
Right.
Right? But the point in me inflating the funds in the budget meetings is so I don't run into that problem, right? I want it to be extra high, that way I never run the problem where, okay, I've got $30,000 in this fund, but I can't spend it because I only budgeted for 60, and I've already hit 60. That's, to me, that's silly, right?
But that's where Jackie was getting at, you can't, you're not supposed to do that.
Right, right, right. So I want a budget for enough that allows me, that I can spend the money that's in that account. Basically for the well-being of law enforcement or the well-being of my office.
What you should do is like look at your budget balance and that is what you, that's what that is for.
I get it, but that's not always accurate. And so to me, to have all this money that I can't spend simply because I didn't budget for it, is silly when I'm not asking for mon, I'm not asking the county to fund it.
I completely understand, so from our standpoint, that's how we operate as a.
Sure, but, sure.
Hard to know.
Sure, but that's why, that's why I put the big number in there, so I'll never reach that ceiling knowing that, hey, if I don't get that, I can't spend that any more time. So that's why I did, that's why we do inflated numbers on those, on that account only because on the other accounts, we try to stay within pretty close. We look, okay, what have we spent so far this year, you know, how many months we have left? I mean, we do that like a normal person would do a budget, but this account is just so. But this account is just so goofy that we inflated it so we're not hamstrung. You know, because really, if I spend everything that was in the budget in the diversion right now, that means for the next three months, everything we collect, I could only spend another, what, seven thousand out of it? So if you have an officer or we need a new computer, we have an officer that needs supplement for a jacket or a regio or a taser, I've got this money here that I can't touch.
Granted, but I'm certain that there is another line item that I can get another budget somewhere that we can utilize.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, somebody could ask for an appropriation and, yeah.
Have to come from you.
Absolutely.
But, you know, the issue would be taken care of.
Right, right. Yeah, I think so too. It's just easier when you've got those monies there and stuff like this for, so anyways, so, okay. Anything else I need to do then besides come with a, a more accurate figure of what I need to finish off the year? Then what do I need to do then to amend the budget that I submitted?
No, we just need to know what, how much you're going to give in bonuses.
Okay.
For the, so you could either transfer that amount.
Okay.
Or the other part, they're in there. I mean, if you run out of money, well, when you turn in a claim, they'll say this can't be funded.
Right, absolutely. I mean, that's.
Right.
Well, I wouldn't do that. I, I wouldn't.
I mean, I'm gonna be saying, that's the next step.
That's the, yeah. That's the thing about that fund. If we run out of money, I'm, I can't come to you and say, hey, will you, the county give me ten thousand dollars? This is a self-sustaining fund in the sense that how much money are you not going to spend? It's just the way it is, so. Okay, so I need you more accurate number? Do I need to do anything? I guess I get what you have in mind. Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you, girls.
Okay, on the floor, we've got a motion by Paul, the second by Ethan. Any further discussion? Well, that's rather confusing.
I would suggest that is something that you asked Jackie when you did do that budget. Because she did say it wasn't fundable. So with her not being here, I almost speak for that.
Are there other accounts that are similar to that one in the way it's managed through states perpetuation?
It's taken care of by us.
Yeah, perpetuation, like anything.
Seems like there are other ones.
Well, I hope to bring this up. It's like the health department one time.
Yeah.
They wanted to give their, that car, but they did not have enough money in their cash balance to be able to fund that. They had enough to fund their budget, but they didn't have enough to put the additional in to get that car. So you just have to have your money in your cash flow.
I mean, I, I kind of see where he's coming from. However, that's not, that's not a gap given generally except for the county of reference. That's not, you're not doing it, so. Okay, any, anything else?
So did we vote on it?
Not yet. For the advertisement, ten thousand dollars for pretrial. Motion, vague, second by Ethan. All those who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Motion carries, sent through. Okay, is there any additional business to be brought to the? Yeah, oh, yes. All the individuals, I thought that I kind of.
So I'll just, yeah, I'll just speak up here. We kind of alluded to it earlier in the meeting. The CARES Act committee met yesterday. If you recall, previously, we were informed that we had about six hundred and fifty-two, fifty-three thousand dollars in CARES Act money that we could use for COVID-related expenses and preparation specific to COVID or any related issues going forward. But that money had to be spent utilized by the end of the year. Okay, so as of yesterday, Beth, myself, our EMA director and Commissioner Hilton met and we've identified about, about half of that money so far that we think can be utilized for expenses that we've incurred and also preparation for upcoming events should that happen. Just, I do know, we talked about the computers. Mike, just let me know. Here a minute ago, Beth, did you want to interject?
No, I just, I know they're been approved.
Yeah.
They're not all the way approved because the commissioners have to approve.
Right, agreed, yes. So Mike's done a great job and credit to him for, you know, really identifying the needs and the things that we need to get up to speed and continue to battle this pandemic. Also in working with Veronica from Barnes and Thornburg and just making sure that everything that we identify as a need, whether it be computers, whether it be more PPE equipment, whether it be, you know, any, any of the other needs that the county may have, then taking that to Veronica and making sure that those fit into the categories that are eligible for that CARES Act money. So I, I feel like we're in a good spot. We're progressing well to utilize that money for the benefit of the county and credit to Mike for all the work that he's put into it as well. But what I was going to say about the computers, they, Veronica did say in IFA also that that is approved under the particular category for the COVID-related expenses under the CARES Act. So that's been approved. We need to take everything that we then determine is appropriate, utilize that money for as a recommendation to the commissioners and the commissioners need to approve it, which is what I was alluding to. So we're going to meet again here in the next few weeks and continue to work on that so that we utilize those funds appropriately by the end of the year as needed. Any other input or?
What also about the salary changes that, trying to get some of that reimbursed, not salaries per hour, they go into overtime. Certain people are.
That was going to be my question.
Some of it is eligible and some of it is not. You know, like not everybody in the health department because two of them are grants and we can't get that treasurer's office, my office, according to that was, well, there might be one in my office we're going to try to, try to get, but Mike.
I got confirmation, the soil and water that I was trying to get reimbursable, I got confirmation today that that one is not. It, it has to be directly related to mitigating or responding to the, the health emergency itself. So it's, it's pretty tight. Just because they were considered essential does not make it ineligible, reimbursable to the county.
So it has to be almost a direct link.
Yes, it has to be a direct link to COVID. So like Joyce is definite that it is a reimbursable expense. The, the healthcare workers out at the manor are a direct link to COVID. As of yesterday, I think we've identified about seventy, it was just shy of seventy-three thousand dollars in overtime and benefits that are reimbursable.
So where are three hundred-ish plus?
I think our number was three eighty-seven is where we're at. There's some other things that we're looking at. There's got to be some more discussions. And, you know, this is.
This is also the product that in case we had a. Yeah, it's on, yeah.
Right. Is there any salaries? Is, I mean, is there anyone without, is there any department specifically that is close to being over budgeted in that? Because salaries are still all under budget.
I've had several of them transfer money into the COVID line. I've asked so we can keep that straight just in case we could do that. They also, the, the benefits, are the taxes and benefits. We're working on that also, you know, to see if we can reverse for people. But most of them have been transferred.
Kind of want to make that noted. I mean, we always talk about extra expenses, extra expenses, but still make note that it's still, it's still under budget and we're not way over because of all the COVID expenses. And then this is going to absolutely help the situation and it should be, I think, very well.
And I want to know that we put it in rainy day, so all the reimbursements will go right back into rainy day. I know that the commissioners made a fund. They were instructed to make a fund. And I was going to make the rainy day line money into that. I put it on hold. I need to talk to Ted or I might talk to Eric here. You're really not supposed to, I would write a check out and put it in there, but Jackie had made a comment that that's not what we need to do. Even though that the money could go back in, no matter what anyway. So that's what we were instructed to do, so we've got to check that out, but that's not a problem. That we're right there where it's at.
Yeah, I think, Chris, you've got an excellent point to say, you know, we're not able to say perfect at this point without having received those funds. And, you know, what we can do, that's going to be very helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or anything?
I think what we, by you, what we're doing on the CARES Act committee, and I just want to throw this out, is we're, we're taking a look at what we can use to expand all the departments across the county. And from the testing, the PPE, and then moving on to pod sites when we get into the immunization portion. And then for future pandemics, we can, you know, there's going to be something coming in the future. And we don't know if there's going to be future funding. So when this funding is gone in December, it's gone. And who knows if we're going to get more money? So we need to take advantage of that money that we have and make sure that we use it to where we can expand our total capabilities, where we can expand our response to pandemics. And, and use, and even use it for, you know, use it the right way to where we can help out other departments. So that's where our challenges are. We're spending it the right way. We're having some pretty lengthy discussions about the stuff that we own. And that, and I think we're making very headless, so.
It's kind of bringing care county up. We're, we don't have some of those emergency things to work with, you know, for instance, like, I don't want to get into all that. But anyway, we have, we have discussed that, you know, like the trailer and stuff like this and the medical supplies and.
I was very impressed by the report in that not knowing that we didn't have those whole pieces of equipment. And I know it's not a lot, maybe only twenty-five hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars, but if you have a, if we even had a mass tornado through here, we are not prepared in my eyes. And that, that equipment in that that you put in the report, we need that stuff.
Well, it's also like to say, that's something that the courthouse custodian, it saves him so much more time. You know, in the jail, you know, you need to, in Carol Manor, I, you put that on the list for Carol Manor maybe.
I'm going to give her one of mine unless we want to add another one of those cartridges to.
But it's just common sense. So we, this is how we need to continue. Not the mask and all that, but sanitize and things like that. You've always been told wash your hands, you know?
And just so you guys know, roughly on the PPE side, we've spent about forty-four thousand dollars, just shy of forty-four thousand. I do have a state order in that's not costing us anything. It's about three pallets worth of stuff. A mixture of cloth mask and ninety-five's can, ninety-five's gowns, face shields and that. So that stockpile that I'm wanting to get is going to start, the fire departments are using it still. The EMS is still using it. So we will start having a little bit of a stockpile. I am running out of room in my communication room, so that training room in the basement is going to become a sore. I just want to let you guys know that we're finally going to have a little bit of a stockpile. And then what I'll do is work with EMS and that and we'll start building a rotation so that's not going to drive up.
And I'll just bring this up too because I know I answered my, but I have heard for, for quite some.